Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council's Special Meeting and Regular Workshop Meetings. The City Council thanks you for participating in your city government. At Special Meetings, we take formal actions on the specific items listed. For anyone following along, there is one particular item tonight. And during the workshops, we only discuss issues with no formal action taken. Now, if you're following along in the ether on TV, packets are available at the City of Pasco's website This meeting is also being televised on PSC TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and in Richland. It is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and on Microsoft Teams. This and previous council meeting videos available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments or ask questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. With that, Ms. Clerk.
Thank you. Councilmember Barajas.
Present.
Councilmember Blaisdell.
Present.
Councilmember Grimm.
Here.
Councilmember Harpster.
Present.
Councilmember Peralis.
Here.
Mayor Potem Milne.
Present.
And Mayor Serrano.
I am here.
Thank you.
We're all here. If you'll please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So that moves us on to item number four, which is our new business. We have a single item, as I mentioned. Item A, which is Legal Counsel Services Agreement. It's going to be presented by our interim city manager, Mr. Zabel, at which time we'll have some discussion. We'll open for two-minute public comment. And unlike the latter meeting where it's up to four minutes, where it's two opposed, it's just you have two minutes, regardless of how many people are either in favor or against. So with that, Mr. Zabel.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As was mentioned, we have one item on the agenda tonight. And that is a couple of options regarding city attorney services. Those being continuing on in consideration of continuing our agreement with Kerr Ferguson Law and a second motion as an option, which we discussed last week, of not continuing on, letting that May 31 date come and pursuing other services or in-house city attorney. We had a good discussion last week about the practicality of recruitment of an in-house city attorney at this point in time and being able to make that date and what all goes into that. So that's really not, honestly, that's probably not a, not a practical alternative for May 1st, May 31st, excuse me. So you'd be either looking at continue on with our current provider or an agreement with a different provider. So our recommendation tonight is to continue on with Kerr Ferguson Law for much of the discussion that we went through last week. And I'm happy to go into that if council wishes to, and perhaps there'll be some questions, but in the interest of time, I did want to just, and Mayor and I had a conversation earlier this morning. I wanted to share a little bit of a perspective from a recruitment and city manager standpoint, because I think one of the items that came up last week was, what does September, end of September 2026, look like if councils have a mind to go forward with a in-house city attorney at some point sooner than that? And I will just share, you have a few things going on. And I talked a little bit about a new city manager coming on last week at some point in time. Most likely, that's going to be sometime in July or August. And in July or August, the new city manager is going to find themselves immediately knee-deep in a very complicated, complex budget that has this very significant deficit. And I will say, whatever bandwidth that new person has is probably going to be spent working through that issue with the council, with staff. And that's going to get you mostly through fall. You get into, from a recruitment standpoint, taking off my recruiter hat, or city manager hat, putting a recruiter hat on. Recruiting through Christmas and Thanksgiving is just not a very successful strategy for, people just are not paying attention that time of year. I can tell you from a couple of years' worth of experience on the recruitment side in the private sector, plus, you know, my own public sector side. It's just, it's not a time where folks are necessarily responsive. So you're looking at probably, at the earliest, a recruitment at some point in time in January. And that's going to be probably, depending on the availability of candidates, best-case scenario, you actually find somebody through that process. You're probably four months, or four months out from making a selection and another month from a start, because they're going to have obligations where they're at and have to relocate potentially, things like that. So that kind of puts you into the summer of 2026, which I kind of wanted to walk through that a little bit, so you kind of understand, even at that point, you're within a few months of the end of this contract you're considering tonight. And there's a, I think that's a fairly decent transition period, given the body of work we have in the city attorney's office and bringing on a new city attorney, who will then have to hire a deputy and a legal secretary, excuse me, a legal assistant, before they can really be fully functional. And that's going to, that's going to be a little bit of a process there. I would think a new city attorney, that's going to be their biggest priority upon coming aboard, is getting the folks to help them get that job done, because it's not a, clearly, it's not a one-person job. With that, our recommended motion is to continue the original contract terms with Kerr Ferguson Law through the September date and would entertain any council questions. And I don't know if Mr. Ferguson wanted to share any thoughts.
I think I shared plenty of thoughts last time, so unless anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. But yeah, I don't have anything in particular to add.
Thank you, gentlemen. Questions or comments from council? I am seeing none. I am going to go ahead and open up the public comment for up to two minutes per person. So, public comment going once, going twice, going a third time. Okay, public comment is closed. So with that, Mr. Milne, can you please make a motion? And we should be able to do this one via voice vote, right? Okay, let's do that via voice vote.
Okay, Mayor. I would move to direct the city manager to accept rescission of the notice of termination previously received from Kerr Ferguson Law, P L L C.
Okay.
Whoops, turned my mic off. Got a motion by Mr. Milne, a second by Ms. Blaisdell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Mr. Ferguson, go get some help. Yeah, no, I know you are, and I appreciate the information. We appreciate the work and the relationship that you have, obviously, the 70 years or whatever it is that you've been here, in some capacity or another, is extremely helpful. I think it's honestly, what's 12, 17?
I've been here 11. The firm's been around since 95 with the city, so.
So certainly some institutional knowledge that helps. So thank you very much and look forward to your continued service for the next give or take your nap. So with that, it is 7:09 or whatever. We are closing the special meeting and we're gabbling, oh, we noticed that for 7:15. We've got to take a six-minute break, don't we? Alrighty, we are in recess till 7:15, because we were actually, or not actually, we're always efficient. We were extra efficient tonight. So sit tight for another five minutes and change. Good evening. This is Monday, February 24th, 2025. This is the City of Pasco City Council Workshop Meeting. As we've already conducted our special meeting, we're going to skip items two and three, and we're going to go roll, roll right into item number four, which is verbal reports from council members. Do we have any such reports? Mr. Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attended the Ben Franklin Council of Governments meeting on Friday and also went out to my very first push-in ceremony out at Station 85. Took my family there Friday afternoon, and of course, some other of you were there also. But yes, that was just a really good opportunity to interact. And of course, my little two-year-old was scared to death of the big fire engine, but cried when we pulled him away at the end, so really typical. And then, of course, Mr. Mayor, I joined you out at the Legacy of Enter Ribbon Cutting. And what a fine facility they built there in Broadmoor. And good news that they said they're pretty much booked out for the year already. So love to see that kind of reaction to a new business opening up in Pasco. So yeah, no, it was good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. I will give a quick report and then we'll slide into the rest of the agenda. I obviously attended the push-in ceremony, and that was a phenomenal time. Had a real tough time talking about the service you all provide, both police and fire, to this community. As I was staring at my six-year-old, I'm always reminded that your stations do great work, because it's been twice that we've had to call you and you've helped him respond. So I'm eternally grateful for the work that our first responders do. So thank you for that. And then, as you mentioned, the Legacy of C Ribbon Cutting. And then today, I attended the Hanford Area Economic Investment Fund Advisory Committee meeting. It's getting really interesting. We're looking at actually kind of transferring some of our scope of work potentially to TRIDEC, which I think, given their reputation, given their history in the community, I think it could actually benefit Tri-Cities immensely. So stay tuned for local government moving at the speed of local government. But we are really engaged, and I do see some, you know, some excellence coming out of that just by not duplicating some scope to work. So grateful to TRIDEC team, Mr. Dye and his team, they're always phenomenal, they're always on top of things, and just grateful for their willingness to serve our community. So with that, Mr. Grimm, use your light.
Yeah, sorry. One more thing, Mr. Mayor. It was a busy week. I forgot that Councilmember Peralis and I invested two hours for a Transportation Projects Meeting last week, and that was extremely informative and almost like a college course on what, you know, our staff does around the city, but incredibly informative. And I appreciate Ms. Sigdell sending us the slide deck and hopefully being able to pass some of that information on to the rest of you. But just a really, really good investment of our time, and I appreciate staff investing us in that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. Mr. Zabel, I see your light.
Thank you, Mayor. Just on that, it was a good primer for council on the traffic impact fees. And we planned on inviting the remainder of the council to the same presentation. So I just think it'd be really good information to have in that kind of a setting prior to pushing the issue out into the public.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel, Mr. Grimm. Seeing no further lights, I'm going to move on to item number five, which is items for discussion with opportunity for public comment. Now, as I mentioned, this has the two-minute public comment, which is two, or it's eight-minute public comment, up to two minutes per person with a total of eight minutes per item. And that's going to be two comments, either for or in opposition. And obviously, if someone's in the middle, we'll just slide it into the aggregate amount of time. So up to eight minutes total, up to two minutes per individual on each of these items. Now, I understand that we're missing one of the critical elements of item A, the presentation of municipal court overview. So I'm going to ask Mr. Milne to make a motion to swap items 5A and 5B. And we'll start with what was 5B, and it'll now become 5A.
Okay, Mayor. Yes, I would like to make a motion that we swap A and we have it as B, and B as A, if that makes sense, and that way we can keep moving with our agenda.
Got a motion by Mr. Milne, a second by Mr. Grimm. I guess any discussion on that for any reason? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Hearing none, that passes unanimously, unanimously. So we're going to the former item B, which is now item A, and it looks like, Mr. Raymond, you'll be presenting. That is Resolution 20, Resolution 25 to 2025 to 2029, Tri-Cities Home Consortium Consolidated Plan, 2025 Annual Action Plan. Mr. Raymond.
Yeah, thank you very much, Your Honor, and council members. Good evening. Simply introducing Kristen Webb, who's been working hard with other consortium members of the community, and of course, the community members themselves, getting the input needed to put this plan together. This is something that happens every five years. It's a pretty routine plan that we're required to complete before moving forward with other funding cycles. So with that, I'll just introduce Kristen Webb, who will walk you through the program and our recommendations. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the 2025 Tri-Cities Home Consortium Consolidated Plan and the 2025 Annual Action Plan. I would like to emphasize that these documents serve as a strategic planning tool mandated by HUD for cities eligible for funding. They outline our goals and proposed activities, but they do not constitute a binding commitment by the city to allocate funds or to implement these initiatives over the next five years. Actual execution of the plan will depend entirely on the availability of funding and other resources. And hence, while the plan sets forth our vision, its implementation is contingent upon securing the necessary funding cycle. Every five years, the Home Consortium Consolidated Plan is refreshed to serve as a critical tool for elevating our region's affordable housing and community development needs through data-driven insights. This process helps us understand market conditions and make informed decisions that reflect the evolving priorities of our committees. Notably, the current 2020-2024 plan developed collectively by Kennewick, Pasco, and Richland officially expired on December 31st, 2024, which sets the stage for a renewed vision in the upcoming 2025-2029 plan. Since July 2024, the Cloud Burst Group has been working closely with staff from Kennewick, Pasco, and Richland to gather valuable input from both stakeholders and the public. This collaboration has evolved a thorough assessment of community needs and the collection of important statistical data. On September 5th and 6th, we held six hybrid consultations sessions with 47 community partners and agencies to further explore these insights. In addition to virtual focus groups, which included planning and public works representatives from each city, were conducted on September 10th and 11th to ensure broad community participation. And as a requirement in our Citizen Participation Plan, an online survey, which we received 90 responses, was available from August 15th, 2024 to September 20th, 2024, allowing residents to contribute their opinions on housing and development needs in our communities. Our analysis reveals several interconnected challenges that our region must address. First, housing affordability is increasingly understrained due to constrained inventory at aging housing stock and extended wait times for public housing. These factors together are limited access to affordable housing for many residents. At the same time, our community is facing significant shortcomings in public infrastructures and services. The high demand for enhanced mental health support, safer pedestrian pathways, public services, and additional shelter options clearly points to areas where target investment is urgently needed. Moreover, the plan underscores scores, the importance of building resilience against environmental hazards. Low-income households are particularly vulnerable to the adverse effects of flooding, drought, and wildfires, making it imperative that we focus on developing robust, sustainable housing and infrastructure solutions that we can withstand these challenges. Since 1980, the Pasco community has benefited from over 25 million in investments aimed at revitalizing our neighborhoods and supporting community development. These funds have been directed towards activities like housing rehabilitations, down payment assistance, facade enhancements, financial relief grants for businesses, and incubator kitchen, also known as Pasco Specialty Kitchen. Additionally, these investments have supported the renovation of Peanuts Park and several LIDs throughout the city, as well as the expansion of vital public services such as after-school and senior programs. Over the next five years, should the city receive funding, our focus will be on enhancing affordable housing, community and economic development, and strengthening public services. These priorities were established based on comprehensive data gathered through the development of our consolidated plan. We are looking at an estimated entitlement of approximately 3.3 million from CDPG and 700,000 from home funds. The council will review and authorize the budget on an annual basis, first when the annual work plan is adopted, and again when the city receives the HUD funding agreement. Again, with the uncertainty of the funding, just want to reiterate that you are approving just the plan. These are the next steps. We will begin with the review and adoption process by the city council. Presentation tonight with formal approval next week by resolution, if so be. With approval from city council, our consultants will input the plan into the HUD platform so that when the city receives the fiscal year 2025 funding letter, the consolidated plan will be ready to send to HUD for final approval. Upon approval from HUD, the plan will guide funding and programs for the next five fiscal years. Once the consolidated plan is approved, work will resume on updating the Fair Housing Plan. And I will stand if you have any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Webb, for that presentation. You mentioned online comments. How many did you say were received?
I don't know.
The online comments?
The online comments was 90.
90, okay. The, I did notice there was zero comments at the Planning Commission meetings, which was interesting, given that there were 90 online comments. But, you know, there was a lot of involvement from stakeholders in the community as far as different organizations like TRIDEC and whatnot.
Correct.
One question that I have that I'm not sure if you can answer, maybe provide some insight, is with federal spending being cut across the board, specifically programs like this, what, has there been any talk of what to do if we don't end up receiving the federal funding that we're anticipating? Because it's not like we just have millions of dollars to fill that hole when that need still exists.
Right. So if we don't receive the funding, then the city would have to come up with other avenues, or we would have to come up with other avenues as far as grants or anything else, so.
Yeah, thanks.
The funding is an annual process, the city budget. So if you didn't have the federal dollars, you wouldn't do the program. If you don't have the federal dollars, you're not obligated to do the program.
Thank you. Mr. Browse.
Thank you, Mayor. When I was reading through this, I was thinking about kind of past years. And I thought first, oh, man, they're getting, we're getting 4 million over a year. It was over five years, I guess. So I guess my question is, with some of the things that you found in the report through the consultation with stakeholders, I just kind of was thinking back about some of the things that I guess the city has, that we approved for funding for CDPG's funds. It just seems like it's really different. Yeah, I think one that comes to mind is I think we gave CDGB funding for like a new HUD at the Pasco Specialty Kitchen, is that right? So I guess, I guess my question is, if you could think back that far, is that something we needed back then? Not that specifically, because I'm really looking at, it says affordable housing shortages, like kind of like the three themes, homelessness and shelter gaps, and then like, I guess, public infrastructure investments. So I'm thinking, so for the future, when we put this, put this money out there for, so people can apply, how are we, is there a way that we can stipulate the funding go towards those three categories essentially? Or do we just kind of open it up and whoever applies, if, you know, if the idea is good, the program is good, we can fund it? Because it just seems like, I'm looking at it right here, I'm like, huh, I don't remember really. Maybe I got to look at those plans from during those times and kind of compare to what was funded. So does that question make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense. So with the application process, they have to basically fall within one of those goals. And then they also have to meet a national objective. So not anybody can just come and apply. Plus, they have to be a nonprofit 501(c).
And so as of right now, we don't And so as of right now, we don't know how much we'll be getting.
No, we won't, normally, we don't get our allocation letter until either the end of April sometime in May.
Okay, and then there'll be application process and then if I remember, it goes to the planning commission?
Yes, and then comes to City Council for recommendation.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, do we have any additional comments or questions, council? Seeing none, I, thank you for this same presentation and thank you for your continued service of our community and and the work that you're all doing. With these funds, appreciate it. Do we have any public comments on this issue? You can go ahead and slide, yeah. Going once, going twice, third call for public comment on this issue. Seeing none, we will move on to item B, which is formerly item A, which is presentation. And this is the Pasco Municipal Court overview. Um, I know Judge Stillwell and and his staff, oh Angela, looks like you're gonna kick us off, or you're gonna hand it off to Judge Stillwell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, that's exactly what I'm gonna do, um, so I will uh let Judge Still take it over a while, I'll get the presentation ready.
If you can turn on the mic, it's gonna be the base, there you go.
I'm still old school, I use paper in presentations when I work at things up, uh, it's uh good to be here this evening. Uh, really what I'm gonna work on today is just kind of an overview of what Pasco Municipal Court is and how it fits into the city. Um, uh, not only government, but what we intend to do or what we try to do uh in uh Pasco Municipal Court. Uh, you go to the next slide if you wish. Municipal Court was established, uh, Pasco Municipal Court was established in nineteen eighty-four. And uh, and they operate under the RCW Chapter Three Fifty, which um governs the way municipal courts. Uh, do business in the city of Pas- in the, in the state of Washington. Uh, we are a partner with the city and we um pursue access to ju- or access to justice for all. Uh, eh, we are hoping for a fair and effective determination in all causes. And we would talk about causes, uh, in this case, Pasco Municipal Court has jurisdiction over misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors. Uh, I've been to a lot of functions involving the city and I hear people talking about what it is that uh municipal court might do. And although I would say, we're a court of limited jurisdiction, so that would be similar to like a district court as well. But almost ninety-five percent of cases that are heard across the state of Washington come into courts of limited jurisdiction. The rest of them would be filed in Superior Court or some type of appellate uh hu- above uh the um. Courts of limited jurisdiction. So what I, what I mean when we're talking about misdemeanors or gro- gross misdemeanors, that happens to be like DUIs, domestic violence. Fourth degree assaults, there are other types of assaults that are much worse that are heard in Superior Court. The driving while license suspended, reckless driving, the trespasses we see uh in city downtown. Uh, and now possession of a controlled substance that I'll talk to you about in a little bit more detail when we talk about. Uh, Blake and how that impacted uh the city and what we do as a result of the decision of uh Blake. I do determine as the judge in court, um, all things that become before um Pasco Municipal Court. And I do that by applying the rules, uh, and also um. The law as it's uh determined in court, how they apply to specific, specific facts. Right now, and you can go to the next department, Pasco Municipal Court consists of me, a part-time judge, one court administrator. A lead clerk who oversees the deputy court clerks' uh day-to-day operations. Uh, a, two probation officers, two probation clerks who support the probation office. A one bailiff, he's kind of slash a court specialist. He's the guy you probably have heard of most uh in contacts with Pasco Municipal Court. Because he's the one out there doing the graffiti abatement and using the crews that uh are uh performing. Um, work crew hours as a part of a judgment and sentence that might be en- might have been entered in Pasco Municipal Court. To go out and remove that um graffiti that's out there. And then we have a community resource coordinator who uh oversees the implementation of that particular program. And she's here today and she's gonna talk to you about um some of that uh community resource program. I'll just tell you this about that program. Uh, I started it on a whim in September two thousand twenty-two. I just happened to see an email from the administrative office of the courts. Saying that there was some grant money available for a program if you were willing to do something. It's just before therapeutic courts became really popular, they were trying other types of avenues to spend that money to help individuals. So we reached out having no idea what we were um doing at the time and asked for some money. And we, we were awarded ultimately about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to implement uh the program. The first time uh in that grant that paid for the community resource coordinator's position. And also all of the work that she did at uh the time. It's uh morphed a little bit, the city now pays for the position for the community resource coordinator. Uh, the original funds that we received, uh, we were advised that they like to give those to new individuals trying things. And so we didn't qualify for the next go-around in um grant monies. But um Gracie's been able to apply for and receive some other uh funding. For programs that we have put in place and I'm gonna have her come up and talk about those uh items. Before I move on and talk about uh Blake and the city of grants uh pass. Eh, in a little bit more detail about how those cases affect um us.
Hello, I think we can go to the one that talks about the coordinator program. So I am the core community resource coordinator pro- uh for the municipal court. And my position works with the community as well as probationers, as well as inmates and anybody else that needs help in our community. So I do case managing, so I support probationers, they get referred to me um to make sure that they're complying and meeting uh supervision conditions. So if there's something that's keeping them from complying with what the judge told them in court, I'm able to provide those resources to them. Um, I connect residents with available services, so I provide community assistance for anything, like if they need to apply for. Um, HRC, which is the Housing Resource Center, because they do not have funds to pay for rent or they're homeless. Um, like he mentioned, I do grant manage, I apply for and oversee and administer ground funding. Um, because we didn't get the grant this time around, we have been trying to find little grants. So I was able to apply for the um transportation grant, so we are able to get seven hundred and fifty dollars worth of tickets. So when somebody that's needs to get an appointment to counseling or anything like that, we're able to provide them with bus tickets. Um, and they're able to get to where they need to go. Um, and then we're working on another one where they'll be able to give us funds to be able to pay for counseling services. Or uh court mandated classes that the judge needs them to attend. Um, so I do work with other um elected official states and local agencies. Because there's a lot of us out there in Pasco trying to help out the community, especially here at the Volunteer Park, we're right in front of the court. So we are the first point of contact, um, so one of those was being able to partner with the Washington Connection. Um, so now I became, um, it's called a site supervisor, so they're able to come in here instead of going to a DSH office. They will go to my office and I can help them renew, apply for foot stamps and anybody sixty-four and younger, um, to be able to apply for Medicare or Medicaid. Um, and we're trying to open another one with uh Washington Healthcare Authority where sixty-four and older are able to apply. And for them being able to apply for those insurances, they're able to also comply with probation conditions because they're covered. Um, so the whole point of the program is to reduce recidivism, so we need to, I do what's called a CCAT scan. Which is a criminal court assessment tool to make sure where they're at, what they need, if they need to be, um, if they need a job. I sit down with them, I help them make a resume, I help them apply for jobs. Um, if they need transportation, like I said, I provide bus tickets, if they need to apply for some type of um government help, I help them do that. Um, and we, like I said, we do outreach and sometimes I will go and talk to an inmate in jail, we go to the parks, um, I also volunteer on Saturdays. For some community events because it helps to kind of get that familiarity with me outside of the court. Um, so that's how we have been improving the program, just kind of expanding it to not just somebody that is in uh trouble with the law. Um, and this year, we're hopefully gonna be able to send me to probation academy to get a little bit more of knowledge of what we're doing with the program. I think there's another one. Thank you.
And I just wanted to say a, a um, couple of things about what it is that uh we do at the Community Resource uh program. Homeless individuals has a lot, have a lot of roadblocks in front of them, I mean, even if you, they agree to start to go to treatment. Uh, there's transportation, there's food while they're away, there's um money for the program if in fact they qualify for that program. And there's not a lot of funds out there yet, so the fact that Gracie took the step to consolidate into her office. A number of those contacts that have to be made, that eliminates multiple roadblocks for those individuals, individuals. Who are willing or ready to make a change in their uh particular circumstances. When we started the program in twenty twenty-two, from twenty twenty, September twenty twenty-two through about the end of twenty twenty-three. Uh, we housed more than twenty individuals who were homeless uh through uh different programs. Some of them were temporary housing programs. And uh what those temporary housing programs were meant to do is support them during the initial phase. While they move through application for permanent housing for some of those programs that Gracie mentioned. When she talked about what it is we do for them and it was really imperative uh for them. Because uh without a stable base to work from, I don't think anybody's gonna be um, is gonna be successful. And even if they want to do treatment or something like that, uh, they wanna get their license, they wanna apply for social security, they want. If you're homeless, your needs, your number one need is one, where I'm gonna live, where I'm gonna sleep and two, what I'm gonna eat. So if you're constantly thinking about those things, um, it's difficult to think about other ways to improve your particular set of circumstances. So by giving them some temporary place to stay while they transition into something more permanent. It was very helpful because you could start them on that road um earlier. Unfortunately, some of the programs we worked with to house those individuals advised us in January, that is of the twenty-fifth, I think it is. A lot of that, those fundings were cut, they were reduced. So about sixty percent of the people that we had or have now in temporary housing will probably be back on the street. By um the end of March because those funds have gone away. Uh, so that will impact uh the city um as well, because we'll have uh more of that homeless population back. Uh, on the street. Let's talk about uh Blake and City of Grants Pass. Uh, I, I think I'll start with uh the Grants Pass ruling initially. Because um wh- what it really means is we could keep doing what we uh said we were gonna do. When City Council previously passed some legislation about cleaning up downtown, you can't let people sleep on the street. Can't let them sleep in those public areas. And uh somebody appealed that decision, it went up to the federal courts, it went into the Court of Appeals, the Ninth Circuit. They uh ruled that it was unconstitutional. Uh, because we didn't provide any other accommodations where any place for somebody who was homeless to sleep. Uh, it was unconstitutional for us to make it a crime to sleep in the public. Uh, but the court, the Supreme Court reversed that. And uh we can enforce the statute or the Pasco Municipal Code that we have um about sleeping on the street. Uh, I will say that eh, in my experience in this, seeing the cases that come through. The Pasco Police Department doesn't really focus on arresting people who are sleeping out in the public, that's not a primary focus. But if they've broken a law, if they're possession controlled substance in an area or they're using them in public, those are the things that I see Pasco. Police Department focusing on, so I don't, I, I was trying to think if I'd actually dealt with a sleeping in public or sleeping on a sidewalk case. And I think in the last, um, I think in the last two years, I've only ever seen one. And it was a civil infraction that was issued by somebody who was, had set up a camp, really in the middle of the sidewalk. There was, you know, sleeping bags, blankets, cooking utensils, I mean, it was, they literally were camping on the sidewalk. So it was a pretty egregious uh offense, how that affects us is uh I, I don't think it really does Grants Pass. We're still gonna be able to do the things that we were doing previously. If the city wants to enforce the uh sleeping on the street, that's really blocking uh individuals from being able to use our public access ways. They, they're gonna be able to ke- to do that if they wish to enforce that. Uh, and uh, I, I think that's the only way really that Grants Pass affected us. It says you can do what you were planning on doing anyway. Uh, Blake, let's talk about uh Blake. Th- this was an interesting um decision because. Almost thirty years ago, this very issue came up, I, Jim Egan raised it here in um Franklin County. That it's unlawful to uh convict somebody when the statute didn't say you had to knowingly possess. There was just an assumption, so that word knowingly was not contained in the statute. And at that point, thirty years ago, the court said, there's no problem with that, you know? And so things went on that way until uh Blake, when Blake decided this, they said, well, wait a minute. That statute is unconstitutional because it violates due process that's granted by the Fourteenth Amendment and our Washington Constitution. So they struck down all of the convictions that were uh, all the convictions that were entered. In any court, from Superior Court clear down to Municipal Court, if it had to do with a violation of a possession of a controlled substance. At that time, prior to Blake, most of our cases had to do with um possession of marijuana. It didn't have to do with possession of uh controlled substance. That includes uh, you know, cocaine, methamphetamine, heroin, fentanyl, those used to be all filed in Superior Court as felonies. And they were addressed there, so we didn't have any uh issue uh with those. If I could go to the, go to the next slide, let me see. See, in twenty nineteen, we had twelve possession of marijuana cases in Pasco Municipal Court. In twenty twenty, while they were figuring out some of this stuff, we had nine, if I remember properly. Five of those were dismissed before they even pursued uh prosecution. And some of those dealt with minors possessing a controlled substance at the time. In twenty twenty-one, while they were still trying to figure out uh what to do or how to deal with this. We had even less and less in twenty twenty-two, but those were all marijuana-based charges. In twenty twenty-three, after the legislature plat- passed some new legislation in July twenty twenty-two. It took both the states and um local jurisdictions uh a time to figure out how to implement those. And there were times that I think that the state was stepping back and saying, well, wait a second, I think we're gonna let the cities. Deal with this and make it their problem, so they have to spend the money to um deal with possession of controlled substances. So there was a period of time where they finally um passed some legislation. The city adopted new Pasco Municipal Codes in twenty twenty-three, August actually, of twenty twenty-three is when it became enforceable. And then you can see in August of twenty twenty-three, uh eighty-five posi- eighty-five cases involving possession of a controlled substance. Were filed in Pasco Municipal Court, that was just in the last four months of that year. So we went from dealing with ten, twelve, thirteen cases of possessions of drugs up to eighty-five. Uh, in four months and then the next year in twenty twenty-four, there's two hundred and nineteen cases of unlawful possession of a controlled substance. So Blake has impacted the city and Pasco Municipal Court and the police officers with the way we do the. Um, eh, the, the charging and the processes greatly because along with the changes that they made. Saying that it's now up to the city to enforce the possession of a controlled substance, they passed legislation that said, oh, but by the way. On the first two cases that are filed, you have to give them an opportunity to uh go to treatment. Rather than be prosecuted for those offenses. But we're not gonna give you any money uh to enforce that or, or offer that as an opportunity. Uh, they did give money however to an agency that does uh business here in the state of Washington. You may have heard of them, it's Merit Resources, they signed a contract. You may have heard of them, it's Merit Resources. They signed a contract with the state. To provide um a program for what we call the diversion program. And that's where when a person is signed, if they elected to or fi- is charged and the files are brought to municipal court. They get an opportunity to elect to go to treatment. If they do, they sign a document, the court continues the case for. About a year through a waiver speedy trial and gives them an opportunity to go to treatment. I've been doing criminal law in this in Franklin and Benton County for about thirty three years. I'm familiar with these folks who uh engage in these types of programs and who seek treatment. A lot of them need much more than just, here's an op- I've signed an order, now go get treatment. Because everybody wants to do treatment when they're sitting in the jail or in the courtroom and they're in the orange fatigues and they're. Maybe going back to the jail as opposed to being released. So everybody is very eager to do treatment. So rather than just continue this case for a year, I'll set it out for a month, I'll release them from jail. And give them an opportunity to show that they are in fact going to do what they said that they uh want to do. So the other way Blake has affected us is. I think there were close to twelve hundred cases in the city Pasco Municipal Court. Where individuals were convicted of a possession of a controlled substance. Uh so all of those cases have to be set aside and dismissed as a violation of the both the US and the. State Constitution. Because of that, all those individuals who paid fines and other. Legal financial obligations are entitled to have that refunded. So along with that, the the state did. Uh put in place something called the Blake Project, it's operated through the Administrative Office of the Court. And we have actually processed um over two hundred and fifty of those cases. Uh in Pasco Municipal Court uh and um set aside those convictions, disvacated those convictions. And um we've actually even uh refunded some money to individuals who paid those fines and costs. But that money that we we refunded from the city was reimbursed by that Blake Project. So the city didn't have to really, I mean, they had to come up with the money initially, but there was nothing out of pocket that the city paid. When you re uh reimburse those funds to um those individuals. And frankly, uh with the new rule, I I say new because for a long time. When you went to um court, if the court imposed either jail time or jail time and fines and legal. Costs on you. In twenty eighteen, the legislature said, you can't do that anymore, you have to take into account each individual's. Ability to make any payments in that regard. So. I I would say close to fifty two to fifty four percent of the people we see in Pasco Municipal Court would meet the um. Under the one hundred and twenty five percent of the poverty guideline. And so they get court appointed counsel. And so if they qualify for court appointed counsel, they uh you cannot impose legal financial obligations on them. So even during the time when we were imposing fines and costs, a lot of those um legal. Financial obligations were turned over to collection, ended up not being paid and then were written off after ten years as uncollectible because. The court loses jurisdiction after ten years to try to enforce any of those things. So the amount of money I anticipate that. Will have to be reimbursed. There won't be anymore from the city, it now all goes through the. Uh Blake Project through the administrative, the Office of Administrative Courts. And um I don't anticipate the city would have to reimburse any of those um legal financial obligations anymore. That I think is um. That's all I really have to say. There's really a lot more I could say about Pasco Municipal Court and the people that I work with. Every day and the way they interact with the public who uh comes to us. I mean, they're never happy to be there. They're not coming there to visit somebody, you know, they usually have a terrible disposition and I'm I'm very proud of the way my people interact. With those folks and offer services to them and um serve the public and the city. Any questions that I might be able to answer?
Thank you Judge, certainly appreciate that. Uh looks like Mr. Grim.
Thank you, um Mr. Mayor. I I guess I just wanna say Judge Stillwell and Ms. Delgado. What I probably heard the most of from you today is just the hearts you guys have, you know. Ms. Delgado, I mean, I was moved by you volunteering of your own time on Saturdays to go. You know, fur- further deepen some of those connections with the people who really need help and going above and beyond that way. Thank you so much and then. Judge you too at the same time, you know, yes, everybody, I'm sure they, you know, they want opportunities for therapy, you know, when they're standing before you as you. Mentioned in their orange jumpsuits, but you know, for these low level nonviolent crimes, I appreciate you giving them the opportunity for that. And like you said, releasing them and. You know, seeing if they're gonna put their money where their mouth is. So really thank you, first of all, both of you for, you know, having a heart for people who. Maybe just need a break and, you know, need that second chance. And so th- thank you so much for. You know, and I know it's, there was a lot more staff than just you two, and I'm sure the leadership that you guys provide um definitely runs downhill and.
Well, I am gonna say that she says she appears just on Sat- I mean, she does a lot more than just one. Uh opportunity on Saturday. If I, I I've talked to her a number of times throughout the week and she's been to three or four or five different functions. Throughout the week, you know, and she's always uh an advocate for the city, she's always an advocate for the program she has. She's the one who took the initiative to say, well, wait a second, we might help connect these people with these programs. But then there's the roadblock of, a- and it's unfortunate because. You meet us here, we fail at the paperwork, you send them to another agency for housing, you send them to another agency for potential treatment. You send them to another agency for, to determine whether or not they qualify for Medicaid or Medicare or any social security benefits. So and if you miss an appointment at any one of those, you go back to the very beginning again, have to start all over. So when she took the initiative to apply for and become uh basically an office where she can handle a lot of those applications for those individuals. That's why I said it, she really removed a lot of roadblocks for those folks who might be seeking um treatment or housing or anything.
Thank you, and I just, I have a lot of respect too for the fine line that you're walking. Uh you know, it sounds like, you know, your your hands have been tied somewhat by some of these um unfunded mandates that have been passed down and. Um you know, the expectation there and I see our police chief back there and I know he is walking that fine line and yeah, I. He can't speak for the rest of the council, but I can't imagine any of us want as our default position to arrest people, you know, because they're. You know, homeless or sleeping in our parks, but at the same time, you know, that's not what our parks are designed for and I know that they've been going through and. When, you know, there's open drug use and other issues, I'm glad some of this has been cleared up to where they they can make arrests, they can clean up our parks. So that you families and others who wanna use them for what they're originally designed for can. And so, yes, I I realize. Not only you Judge, but also our chief and all of his officers, um you know, it it is a fine line because we wanna care and we wanna have compassion. But at the same point, you know, we can't allow our city to get overrun also. So I just thank you again for all your work, all your staff's work. I I really, really appreciate it, because we can pass rules and they can enforce laws, but unless um you know, you guys are doing your part too. All's for naught, so thank you so much.
I appreciate your comments and I and I think that's why I kind of started out with saying that we are an integral integral part of the city of Pasco. And we try to improve the lives of everybody that we come into contact with.
Like, thank you and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Grim, Mr. Brows.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I wanted to ask, how are we measuring recidivism rates? Do we have like a. Technology, software?
We do, and um. Right now, the uh test that um Ms. Delgado referred to about um. Reviewing with everybody to determine where they're at and at what place they need some type of treatment, that's a um. Test that's been used or is being used by many other jurisdictions. Uh we are just now implementing that and we're implementing some other uh case management systems that will help us. Actually enter that uh information into a computer and database and track that. We can do those things for probation as long as our clerks are on top of the cases and entering that information. But with regard to uh the Community Resource Coordinator. It's a little bit more difficult because uh Ms. Delgado is a one man band, she's there. Doing all of the information, applying for grants, keeping track of records. And so at this point in time, our records are not. Um probably um complete enough to give a determination of about about recidivism. But I think that what we've seen, it's been something north of um. Something north of thirty percent in full compliance with some type of program. And uh understandably, this is with any um. Addiction, whether it's alcohol or drugs or gambling or any, there are people who they progress and they backslide a little bit and they progress some more. But we are working towards tracking those. Um there's a new case management system coming into the Courts of Limited Jurisdiction. Uh we should have that um implemented in July or August of this year. And with that new program. Once she conducts one of those interviews, that's gonna populate a screen that will then have those individuals who are being seen. By the Community Resource Coordinator and then we will be able to specifically track all of their um progress. Uh through the program from the time they meet with the Community Resource Coordinator uh to wherever they are in the particular process.
Okay, yeah, no, it seems like there could be some upgrades, because I guess I would, I wouldn't like to see someone who's probably been, I guess. I don't know about charged or maybe has been um came into contact with law enforcement a couple of times for drug possession and then we just don't have the. Case management capabilities to, you know, if someone's gonna do the crime, I I think they'll have to do some time. I mean, like you said, you said about north of thirty percent of people are successful, that means a little over sixty percent or not. And so I'm sure, I don't, I wanna use like this assumption, but would you say like a large proportion? There's a small proportion of people who commit a lot of the crimes, I mean, you see a lot of repeat offenders, or is it pretty much just?
I do, and you could probably even talk to the chief, I mean, I, and he would support this. I think there's probably. Oh, um five or six individuals that we re- see routinely who are committing. Maybe. Twenty percent of those um. Issues that we're having. I I had a discussion with a young man who, he he has a home in Kennewick, he has a mother in Kennewick, he has a mother who receives. Assistance to help her twin boys, but they're here downtown Pasco all the time, causing trouble, getting arrested, doing drugs. And they do get uh arrested frequently. I mean, to such a, I mean, if I recognize somebody and say their name. They've been in front of me a lot of times and there's a few of them that I see.
In regards to the data earlier where it it talked about, you know, I guess people being charged. And after Blake, the removal, you know, Blake decision, it went down and then it went up. What what's attributed to like the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, that huge spike, is it just because of implementing that? That new law here in the city of Pasco or?
It is because, but it's now all drugs, possession of any drug is now filed in Pasco Municipal Court. No longer uh Franklin County Superior Court. So what used to be in Superior Court is uh fentanyl, meth, cocaine, heroin, those. Um uh schedule controlled drugs, those were all filed in Superior Court before Blake. After Blake, those all get filed in Pasco Municipal Court now.
Do you see more marijuana, is it fentanyl, is it para- like, what do you see the most of, I guess?
Fentanyl.
Fentanyl.
Yeah. Meth, meth and fentanyl probably tied. Not very much cocaine, not very much heroin anymore, still out there. And never, I mean, they. Marijuana is legalized, so unless you're carrying it around in your car, you know, and violating the rules there, you're probably not gonna see any marijuana violations or you're under the age of twenty one.
I got just two more. Um is it, do you, in your eyes, you know, you talked about the no sit no lie ordinance that we passed this past year. Do you feel like that's been effective or would that be more of a question for law enforcement?
I think you'd have to talk to the Pasco Police Department because I know, I only see them if they're filed and they come into court. And like I said, in the last two years, I've only seen one of those. So I think, and I may be overspeaking and maybe the chief wants to correct me, but I think. The officers are using their discretion to move people along and then only filing for if there's, I. The number one um place that it has um trespass charges. Is right downtown in Peanuts Park. And we all know why, it's a congregation fro- of people who come down there, or at least I know why. They're um associating with people who are uh homeless, that's where everybody they know who is homeless tends to hang out. And that it's also where they go to use uh fentanyl and meth uh in that area and in the alleys around there. So they tend to just wander over to Peanuts Park and honestly, the police force has been doing a really good job of uh. Nabbing those up. I mean, we have some people who have been trespassed for life now from Peanuts Park and um. I know one gentleman, he's been back at least five times since being trespassed for life, so it's not something that um. He seems really bothers him.
And then the last thing, I don't wanna mischaracterize what you said, but I I typed down, you you kinda, you said, what do we want to enforce like as a city? Body, wh- what I guess, can you kinda explain kinda what you mean by that? Do you? Perhaps, do you think we should look into crafting different ordinances?
I would never make that suggestion to uh City Council because I know my place. I mean, we're a three branched government. I mean, we have the executive. A- and our legislative and then I'm the judicial branch. Uh and so. I'm here because the executive uh chose me, appointed me, and then City Council approved my position. So I would never uh think that I should recommend to the city that you pass any particular ordinances. I'm here to interpret those ordinances and apply them fairly to the population that appears in front of me. That being said, I think the executive branch through the police department has the authority to. Uh how they enforce the city lies they uh ordinance.
That's all I had, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Brows. Mr. Grim, if you got a quick one?
Yep, just one follow up question. I know um the 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 police, you know, the Columbia Valley um Recovery Center. You know, it gives police an option, you know, rather than taking somebody to jail or the fire department, taking them to the hospital. How does that interact with your court was the one follow up question I wanted to ask?
You know, unfortunately, I think things are a little bit disjointed the way that might happen because. Most of the individuals I see have been charged with a possession of a controlled substance charge. And then when they get here through a program that we have with, they're called provisional attorneys at arraignment hearings. They talk to the individuals and also navigators from Merit Resources come to every one of my. Arraignment dockets. So that's every day for people who are in custody and then it's every Tuesday afternoon. And they talk to people about whether or not they are interested in doing treatment. So that's where a diversion into the Merit Resources. Navigator program would happen. Those other programs, those only happen to get into treatment if they voluntarily. Uh do something after being remanded to one of those programs. So they have to take the first step. Here, if you've been charged with a crime, I I I can twist their arms a little bit and hopefully get a little bit of compliance, but even that's not always the. Uh way things go.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification. Thank you Judge, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alright.
Uh looks like we have no further comments. Judge, Ms. Delgado, thank you for your commitment to our community.
Alright.
Appreciate your tough position. Um spent a lot of time with Judge Larson out of Federal Way and. He talked about how folks kind of game the system and it sounds like you've got something in place to help protect our community. And help get folks to the right spot. So I appreciate both your attention to resources and needs of our community and the individual.
Thank you for the comments, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this issue? Going once, going twice, third time? Looks like we've got no co- public comments, you're off the hook till, I don't know, uh yeah, whatever the next fat channel is, right?
Alright.
Thank you, both of you. Um we'll move on to item C, which is DKS Associates Red Light Camera. Study Phase Three Presentation and Resolution, it's the five year agreement with Vera. Mobility for red light cameras and it looks like instead of Chief Ross, Chief Rossky, we got you Captain Harpster and uh one of your associates here.
Alright. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tonight, we do have a presentation by DKS Associates. Uh on our Automated Traffic Safety Camera System, better known you and is a uh red light camera system. Uh this will be the third presentation that DKS has done. Uh, this will be the third presentation that DKS has done for us in the last five years. Uh, now that um we've had the system for five years, uh much better data set for them to analyze and give us a a better look at how that uh traffic safety system is doing. So I will turn it over to uh Mr. Berger here for that presentation.
Thank you, Captain Harpster. So yeah, this is the the City of Pasco Automated Photo Enforcement Program Study, um Phase Three. As Captain Harpster mentioned, we've, this is our our third look at the um data for the the red light cameras. Um, so today, today we'll cover the the study purpose and history, um just the the timeline of the different phases that we've gone through. And then we'll talk about this Phase Three study. We'll touch on the violations data and then the collisions data at these locations. And then we'll have some conclusions and next steps. So under the study purpose, um so the automated photo enforcement installations are located at Road sixty-eight in Burden, at the northbound and southbound approaches to the intersection. And then at Twentieth Avenue and West Court Street, and I believe that's the southbound and eastbound approaches. And that's detailed in the um agenda packet, the exact, exact approaches. Um, the enforcement system was installed in February of twenty nineteen and the citations um were beginning to be given out in mid-August of twenty nineteen. Um, so there's, there's some various methods for uh evaluating effectiveness of red light camera systems. But the the ones we'll focus on here are the frequency of the red light running violations, so we have that data. And then the frequency of traffic collisions, which we have as well. So we'll look at the different phases of this um this effort. You can see we, with the installation of the cameras in twenty nineteen. And then Phase One, we had pretty limited data, um so there wasn't a lot of kind of after implementation data to work with. Um, so it was more focused on a little bit of the before information. Phase Two, we had some data, but also this was in the middle of the um, some of the traffic impacts from COVID nineteen. So it was a little hard to um make any definitive conclusions at this, that point. And then for Phase Three, we have, we have more data and notice um on the bottom, the screen, the the crash data, we're always tend to be lagging a little bit with crash data because of when it's it's provided by WashDOT. So that's why for Phase Three, we have through twenty twenty-three, or I guess through through twenty twenty-two up to twenty twenty-three for this study. But that's still, that still provides us with four um, three and a half years of crash data for after the the cameras were activated. And then our before data was from twenty fifteen through twenty eighteen. So the Phase, Phase One, twenty twenty preliminary results, we showed some violation reduction. Well, after the the cameras were initially activated, there was a, there was a decrease. Um, and then the limited crash data showed the average crash frequency reduced, but the the numbers were so small, it was really hard to make a statistical finding on that. And for Phase Two, violations had mixed results depending on the location, some kind of flat, some reductions. And then the average crash frequency had appeared to have reduced as well, but still, still a limited data set. So now moving into Phase, Phase Three, and we'll focus on the, first on the citation data. This is a lot of bars and numbers. You have more detail in the the packet, um but this is showing our four camera locations. And the the fluctuation in citations over the last five years since these cameras were activated. So you can see the initial spike at the beginning of implementation with the exception of um, I think that's westbound court um on the bottom right, and that that had more to do with, I think, issues with the cameras than um than actual citations. So yeah, you can see the the overall pattern. There was an initial kind of spike and then it, everything kind of plateaued over the next um, the next four years. And we'll, we'll touch on that data, one specific um camera in a, in a bit. Um, overall, looking at the, the data daily, citations generally follow the traffic uh volume patterns, which is not surprising. So as traffic increases, we see more violations, traffic decreases, less violations. Generally peeking around the middle of the day and towards the evening rush hour time period. Uh, this is some more interesting data. Um, looking at this by day of the week, um Friday is just the the highest citation day by a pretty clear margin. Um, and I mean, this is, this is my field, but I I really can't give you a specific reason for that. Um, there, there's probably a lot of theories for why, why people are going to take more chances on a Friday than um any other day. But it's, it's a very clear statistical um high point. Um, so in terms of, I guess you think general enforcement Fridays, um this is, this is a a clear, clear high day. Um, and it it's not because the traffic is higher. Friday traffic generally actually is a little bit lower um in a lot of cases. So it's, it's just a a high citation day. And then this is looking at this, a specific location. You notice that drop from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. This is the northbound camera on Road sixty-eight in Burden. Um, that drop was actually due to a a malfunction, uh or not malfunction, it was an issue with the camera where it wasn't capturing all the data at that um, at that location. So there was a drop in citations. Um, which we caught um looking at the data, passed that on to Red Flex and they, they corrected the issue. So this is one of the advantages of monitoring this data is we can see when we see these fluctuations, then we can learn a little bit about how the system's working and and what's going on there. So that decrease is artificial. That was really a a camera issue. So now onto the the crash analysis, um and this is a lot more definitive than what we were able to share previously. So Road sixty-eight in Burden before and after, this is looking at total crashes at the intersection. This is all approaches. Now, keep in mind, we only have cameras on two of the approaches, northbound and southbound. Um, but we do have a very definitive decrease in total crashes from the before period, twenty fifteen through twenty eighteen to the after, twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-two. Keep in mind, twenty nineteen was also partial citation year. We only had the cameras active in, starting in August. So that number being a little higher is probably somewhat reflective of the the cameras not being activated till August. So yeah, twenty, about twenty-four crashes per year down to about sixteen at this location. Um, looking at a little more detail of the data, what um, what types and severity of crashes, we see the uh possible injury crashes decreasing significantly at this location as well as the entering at angle crashes. Um, those are typically the types of crashes that you see more often from red light violations, angle crashes. Um, so, so we see some reductions there along with the side swipe crashes. They're looking at Twentieth and Court, um same thing before and after significant, even more significant drop in total crashes, almost a half of what we had before. We start with eighteen, um and then we dropped down to to about ten um per year. So, so a much more significant drop at this location. I will point out too, um back to the citation data, the um citations per um vehicle entering the intersection were higher at Twentieth and Court than they were at um at sixty-eight in Burden. So we were seeing more uh more violation, I guess, per driver um at that, at that location. And this is looking again at the collision analysis, um overall crashes decreased, the injury crashes decreasing. Um, not the, not quite the same information on angle crashes that we're seeing at Burden and sixty-eight, although the, our data is pretty limited um in terms of total crashes there, so uh but overall crash reduction at this location. So looking at this, this data, we, the, our overall conclusions, we saw the violations were initially reduced but plateaued about two years after um implementation. So we've seen kind of a steady um, steady amount now. Fridays have the highest um incidence of violations. That's, it's clear from the data. Um, and then the average crash frequency is reduced and that's the, the biggest finding from this is we're actually seeing some effective reduction at these locations. Um, almost a half at Twentieth and Court and about fifty percent at uh at Burden and sixty-eight. And we're seeing it with the angle crashes and injury crashes. And that's, that's really the, the key too, is injury crashes obviously the most concerning. Those are typically your angle crashes, red light um camera crashes, or red light running crashes can be significant. Um, I live in Meridian, Idaho, and I actually saw a uh a red light crash last night when I went to pick up my wife from the airport, a bad angle crash with an injury. Um, it reminded me of, wow, the, this happens all the time, so. Um, new camera location viability. So looking at this data, we, we went ahead and scanned some of the other intersections throughout the, the city that have similar characteristics to the two intersections where we have the cameras, both from a, a crash, um crash incident. It's um history, also uh some of the attributes of those intersections. They're sixty-eight in Burden and Court and Twentieth are very hard to enforce uh for law enforcement. So that's another um, that's another important benefit of the, the red light cameras is it um means the police don't have to enforce those locations. Um, so we, we looked at, we kind of screened the signalized intersections throughout the city and came up with the ones that had high incidence of angle crashes, um high incidence of overall crashes and got, had, ended up with the list of Court and Twenty-second, which is very near Court and Twentieth, very, very close to the um intersection. We currently have some cameras at sixty-eight and Wrigley, um so that's north of our sixty-eight and Burden location. Lewis Street and Twenty-eighth Avenue and then Sylvester Street and Twenty-eighth. So those were all locations that kind of popped from a um viability standpoint. So next steps, um and I can let Jeff uh follow up on this as well. But um continued automated enforcement at these locations, we could consider um additional legs of the intersections. You think of uh sixty-eight and Burden, that westbound approach is also very heavy traffic, um lot of left turn traffic. Keep in mind too, the way these cameras work, because a big concern at a location like that would be what happens to me when I'm coming into the intersection and I cross the line and then the light goes red because there's congestion ahead and I'm, I'm stuck, kind of hung out to dry in the intersection. Those, those incidents are not going to be ticketed or uh that would not result in a citation because the cameras are smart enough to understand that somebody entered the intersection before the light turned red. So there's, there's uh fit some fail safes on that. Um, potential program expansion, again, she, uh Captain Harpster can provide more input on this because there are some state RCWs um related to red light camera enforcement that um require some uh additional analysis beyond just looking at viable locations based on crash data. There's several other elements to that that you have to consider before locating a camera, plus quantity and number of cameras that could be um placed in the city. And then review of citation data yearly to identify any anomalies in the trends. As we pointed out, we were able to capture that issue with one of the cameras, um looking at the data. So I can open it up for questions. Let's, Captain Harpster want to add anything?
Any questions on the presentation, Terry?
Um, go ahead, Mr. Grim. Thank you. I just, um, thank you, Mr. Berger, for the presentation, you know, it's, I couldn't help but to notice I was looking ahead at your numbers and everything. The high incidence of violations on Friday also, and I know people drive a lot less on Sunday. I mean, there's less traffic. But I couldn't help but to notice the opposite, you know, being true. And I don't know if people are just hearing good sermons Sunday morning. I mean, they used to cling to the pews, you know, rather than dropping in and Jonathan Edwards' famous sermon and can't help but to wonder if it's just less people on the roads or some good preaching going on. But my, my question is um really ideological. One of the chief complaints we hear is that traffic cameras are simply for revenue. Oh, those are just, you know, your revenue, those are just making money. And you could see, you know, in your presentation, the numbers you provided, yes, there, there is a little income generated, do at least pay for it. But let, let me ask you this, how do you as a company resolve, you know, the, the four intersections that you proposed and said these would be a good opportunity? How do you resolve that, what our citizens may see as a conflict of interest of just saying, wow, they're just picking, you know, intersections that they think they could make some more money on versus, like you said, the angle crashes that, you know, are for public safety. And I've got skin in the game. I've got a daughter who's taken her driving test this Friday and, you know, I want her to be safe and with her driving others around her to be safe too. But how, how do you deal with that conflict of people just saying they're just moneymakers?
I, I mean, the, the focus is really probably the second part of the presentation, right, which is the crash reduction. Um, and, and it's really the, it's the injury crashes. That's the, that's the biggest concern. I mean, everybody gets some bender benders. Um, but the, those injury crashes, that every time, like I, I said last night, I saw a red light crash and it was, it was a rough one. Um, that's, that's the stuff that we're trying to, to target with this. And when you look at the data um on the violation side, there's, especially when the cameras were first implemented, there was repeat offenders and that just went away, right? After, after a few months, once people received, received some tickets, driving behavior changed. People, once you get one of those tickets, you react differently at that signal in the future. You don't take that chance anymore. Um, so that's the, that's the benefit that we're seeing. There, there's always going to be violations. People are always going to take that one chance, that one time. But um they're not good, they're not likely to do it again. Once you, once you get that ticket, that, that one time, that's, that's usually enough for most folks to say, okay, I'm going to be very careful at this location. So looking at the data at those locations, angle crashes, high incidence of crashes, that's what we're looking at. Um, we don't know if there's a lot of red light running going on at those locations or not. We, we really don't have that data. All we have is the crash data, so that's why we make the recommendation. Um, yeah, it would be one thing if it was based on what people were observing. It's an intersection with no crashes, but they say there's a lot of people running lights here. That's not, that's not a reason for us to put the, the cameras in. It's, it's a high incidence of crashes. That's what we're, we're just trying to fix whatever the issue is.
No, thank you. And I saw the trend line in your graphs that since the implementation of them, I mean, we are seeing less occurrences, which, you know, is gonna, you know, lead to safer roads for us. So I, I, you know, definitely uh appreciate that. And as you well noted also, it's not like we, you know, especially Burden and sixty-eight, I mean, it's almost impossible to, you know, enforce that from a police stand. There's no place to get close. It's such a congested intersection. No, so I, I see the good of it. Yeah, just was looking for the one answer for our constituents, so appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Grim. Mr. Zabel, I see you late.
I, yeah, I did want to just supplement that answer just for a sec, because when, when we put this ordinance together back in twenty eighteen, uh, that was a very topic of discussion, you know, and, and we didn't know at that point in time what the difference in uh monitoring and administering the program is going to be compared to what the fine revenue was going to be. As you can see, it's eh, around a hundred thousand bucks a year roughly, depending on the year. But uh I wanted to assure council, the, the council at the time uh did not want that to be a hundred thousand dollars or five hundred, whatever it's going to be, coming into the city's general fund. So it is dedicated, the pro, any profit out of this is dedicated for traffic safety capital projects. So it does, it rolls back in to make maybe not this intersection, but other intersections, other segments in the, of the transportation system in the city safer. So it's not, not something that rolls into salaries or anything like that, so it's going to capital.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. Mr. Prowls, before I get to you, I want to even further elaborate on that as one of the elected officials who helped adopt that. And I know two of my colleagues are here to my right and left. Um, you know, that wasn't a light decision we made and tw- quite frankly, I'm really disappointed. Um, eh, that we succeeded. Not that we succeeded in making money, but that we succeeded in, in a decreasing crashes. And I know this sounds very backwards, but my hope was the data would bear out, we'd terminate the contract and we'd be done. Um, obviously, what you've shown is that we've been successful in making these two intersections safer. Now we're in the position of whether or not we want to extend or actually looks like maybe a new vendor, uh which we can get into down the road. But I was really hopeful that we would see a par and then like, okay, this is revenue, great, we got the money. And we took, we tried something and it didn't work, uh because it really did feel like a big brother approach. Uh, those were the comments that either I or others echoed uh simultaneously. We really didn't want to do this, but we felt like there was something that had to be done for these two particular intersections. The fruit appears to bear out that we've been successful. And again, I was hoping as I read the packet, I was like, come on, please, crash data, don't, don't show that it's been successful. Not that I wanted to fail here, but I wanted to prove that uh we didn't need this, that we'd be okay, that we could self-regulate. Um, and clearly the data demonstrates a reduction of fifty percent in most instances, even more in others. Um, admittedly, you don't have my buy-in to expand the program at this point. I'm just going to hop out there and say that. Um, but to continue it, I think we're hard pressed to say this isn't effective uh simultaneously while helping to fund other programs that could also be beneficial. I mean, I know people have clamored for years to expand sixty-eight and take that right away, like not, that's not going to happen. But point is, there are things that can be done to continually improve safety in these intersections. And, and uh your data demonstrates that this is one effective tool. So uh while I'm not happy with you, thank you for doing what you're doing. And um, you know, again, it was, it was a really, really hard vote, uh because that's just kind of, didn't feel like how we operate in Pasco. But again, it's, we knew that, we trusted our police and our experts, that uh they would bring a product, if you will, that could prove beneficial to the residents and visitors of Pasco. And it seems that you've done that, so I, I guess, thank you. Um, it's a couch, thank you. And, and please don't take any of that as hard feelings. I just, I admittedly, as I opened the packet, I really hoped it'd be like a Noel and we just deal away with the program. it'd be like a null and we'd just deal away with the program and that was that. But uh thank you for, you know, all of you for the work you've put into this and, and clearly it's been an effective tool. Mr. Prowls?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I wanted to, uh, I'm glad Mr. Grim here and uh asked you a lot of questions that I was gonna ask, so but I'm gonna go and jump to the revenue. Do, do you see that these types of programs are pretty, are cost-effective? They kind of cover the cost of the program because total revenue was like a little over two mil and then the expenses was one point six roughly. According to the data.
Yeah, so in the police department, we don't get too much into the revenue side. Uh, we just have, we administer the program. Uh, revenue is uh, it is what it is. Uh, it, we obviously only want it, it just needs to be cost neutral for us. Uh, we don't want it to, you know, but it is definitely effective and helpful for our community to uh and our, our city so that we can uh expand traffic safety programs, because that's what that, that funding is used for, anything uh beyond, beyond the administration of that program.
Um, as, I guess, as a representative from the police department, do you feel like this program's been effective?
Well, I think we can look at the data and see that it has been, uh, has been effective, because ultimately here, all we're looking for is a safer community. And uh our citizens and the people that visit us have a, a safer experience on our streets. And if they're not getting into collisions, then they're safer. So yes, it has been very effective.
Okay. I guess I, I'll just ask you, what would be, what would be your recommendation? I mean, the report says that we should probably look at these four other locations. I don't want to get into the political fray, but would you recommend, based on your experience and I guess, you know, the data that it would be put into perhaps looking the viability of those four other locations?
Well, I think that is a, a council decision that you'll have to direct to city staff.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Captain and, Captain and Mr. Burger. I don't oh, Miss Igdel, and then Mr. Milne.
Um, Mayor, and uh the question of um cost versus revenue, uh this has been a, a cost neutral proposition for the city for most of the year uh or throughout the years. And there's been about uh half a million, I'm just kind of running numbers on the fly here, since the inception of the program that has gone to um road safety projects overall. So we've been working on that via arterial streets fund. So it gets transferred there and then we work on uh projects that are on arterial streets or anything related to traffic safety only.
Thank you, Miss Igdel. Mr. Milne?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I know in your presentation, you had talked about that cities can only have so many cameras, and I'm not advocating for cameras, but what is the amount? And then I know we've talked about it as well, kind of two-part. You can't have mobile cameras. I know we've talked that that might be changed. You know anything about that or?
Yeah.
As far as on the state level?
Captain Harbster's pretty. Yeah, so uh recently, we put through a change to our automatic traffic safety ordinance, camera ordinance. Um, and some of that had, most of that was because of the new legislation that went through last year. In that legislation, they also, the state also made some changes to the amount of cameras that a city could have. Uh, since we have less than ten cameras, uh we can only uh or cities with less than ten cameras can only increase their, the number of cameras by ten percent. Well, ten percent of four cameras is not one. But they do allow for us to increase um our cameras to one camera under our current revenue model that is outlined in our city ordinance. Um, as far as the city as a whole, um, the uh, we would be able to have eight cameras, but the remi- the four cameras beyond the one camera are three additional, excuse me. So one would bring us up to five, three more would bring us up to eight. Those three cameras would have to be under a different revenue model set forth by the state. Um, which is uh they've put a few more uh constraints on that. And then after the, after four years of that program, uh any revenue than twenty-five percent, after four years, twenty-five percent of that revenue uh that comes in after that has to go to the Cooper Jones uh Traffic Safety uh Foundation as well as part of the state. So they've, they've changed it quite a bit. But we do have the ability to increase by one camera uh under our current revenue model.
Okay, thank you. And then the second part was we, you know, there's, you always have problems with speeding, especially on court or whatever. Uh, I'd advocated for, you know, mobile cameras, Chief of Police said, hey, that's not gonna happen. Uh, do you see like anything, you being a, a vendor where you could put something in an area then move to other areas? Or is that just with our state constitution, is that just like never gonna happen or any idea?
It's uh prohibited, prohibitive uh within our state, just the way that the laws are written. So uh first of all, you'd have to do a traffic safety study to say that the, the need is there, that there, the speeding is there. The collision data supports that for traffic safety camera to be put in that area. Once that has been determined, you have to uh put a, you have to sign that area for thirty days prior to a camera being put in. Then you could put a camera in um and run it. But again, now you're, you're months down the road of when you, you had the issue.
Okay, yeah.
I, I think there's other ways to address those problems.
Okay, yeah. I was just curious, because that's, you know, constituents like, hey, we need something now. This, it seems like a logical, but yeah, it seems like that's too bureaucratic and just crazy stuff, just so you can get something to, to fix an issue. So I, I do appreciate the explanation. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milne. Uh, Ms. Brawls?
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot of information on here. There's a, there's a lot of studies on here. Um, I for want just to be in the clear, I am in support of continuing the agreement because, again, of the data that's been included on here. Um, when we first were discussing this with our former city manager and our former council, uh, there was a lot of questions about, you know, what is a cap- camera capturing? And if I'm not mistaken, it's solely the, the, at the point of going through a red light, it captures the license plate.
Yeah.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no capture of a face, just a license plate.
So um what a camera does capture, it does capture the license plate, yes, but it, it captures the uh, the rear of the vehicle. Uh, and uh not only in photos, but also in videos so that the uh, the registered owner of that vehicle can then uh review that data to see that that was a uh, an infraction of that code.
Thank you. So for clarification, for anyone that's watching, I don't know how many people are watching, but this is again, making sure that we are providing you a safe street to drive in on uh, uh, a safe environment. And again, something going back to the study that was initially done prior to the actual installation was that, um, and you were probably part of the conversation at that point, uh, over a hundred uh violations in that timeframe of an hour maybe, uh, uh, on Road sixty-eight and, and so again, these traffic studies are what leads us to, to, to why we decided to install this safety mechanism based on the study that we have in front of us, based on the information provided to us. It's, it's a, it's a venue. Because again, we can't self-regulate. It's a venue to make sure that we're providing safer streets for anyone that's riding, crossing, driving on these streets. Um, so I would be in favor of continuing this, this program. And again, all revenues again i- are going back to traffic safety education. Um, um, I don't see how we're gonna lose out on this. I don't see how we're gonna lose per se. Um, by continuing this program. There's currently two locations and we know there's a lot of violations throughout the city, so we definitely need to see where are those points are. And again, it's up to our police department uh to figure that one out and make sure that we have safer driving out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brawls, Mr. Harbster. Yeah, I was just gonna add that I appreciate the data provided by DKS, like uh Ms. Brawls mentioned and, and uh Mayor Serrano, that's super helpful for informing my decision process and um kind of in, in opposite of what the mayor was saying, I would be interested in looking into adding more cameras, especially at that Court Twenty Second intersection. Uh, which is a smaller intersection than Court and Twentieth, but has almost as much traffic, it feels like. And then uh, just based on experience, I can attest to the fact this program works. I was, it felt like one of the first people when the grace period ended in twenty nineteen to get one of the citations, but I can confirm that I've not since gotten one. So there you go.
Well, I, I appreciate two points. One, the anecdotal uh improvement in your driving, or we'll assume so, or the better evasive techniques you're deploying, um, as well as that notation that there was in fact a grace period. You know, I know Ms. Brawls mentioned the hundred in the first hour, so those individuals were covered in the grace period. Uh, so I just want to remind folks that, you know, we didn't just slide this in and then start catching uh red light violators. Um, so I really appreciate it, you know, safe return home to Meridian if you're driving or flying or whatever combination thereof. Um, appreciate it and Captain, thank you for your information. Uh, with that, we'll move on to the public comment of this, unless you guys had any partying comments for us.
Did you wanna cover the contract portion of that before that?
Uh, I guess we probably ought to, since I suspect you're gonna ask us to uh approve or deny that. So go ahead. Okay. So also included within your packet, there is uh a contract for a new uh five-year agreement uh with two one-year extensions. Uh, and that's what you'll probably notice is with variability, variability mobile. Um, that is Red Flex. They purchased Red Flex in a, a couple of years ago. So it is still the same vendor. Uh, we still deal with this or work with the same uh back office for uh citation uh approval or denial and uh whatnot. So uh if you have any questions, I'm, I'm available to answer any questions on that contract portion as well.
Does anyone have any questions on the contract? Uh, seeing none, I think, uh, you know, I suspect we'll see this in front of us either next regular meeting or soon.
I believe so.
Thank you, Captain. And again, thanks you, Miss, Mr. Burger, for coming out here. Do you have any public comments on uh this presentation? Going once, going twice, third time? Okay, seeing no public comments, we're gonna move on to item D, which is irrigation utility revenue requirements and connection charges. And this is gonna be uh Director Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We are presenting to you the findings uh from our outreach and a bit of an overview of what was presented to you related to irrigation connection fees and rates in October. And the last distinct portion of this presentation would seek direction from you on connection charges and rates. Next slide please. So a quick overview of what you have already seen is during the October meeting, we visited what was the utility overview, how does the utility work, what were the capital, what was the capital improvement plan associated with this utility? What were the O and M needs? We had a, a very in-depth explanation of the rate model by FCS consultants who provided this presentation to you. And there was a rate comparison with neighboring utilities. And uh this analysis performed by FCS provided the maximum connection fee calculated that would be charged to new users should council decide to um instate this connection fee to the utility as well as a proposed rate increase for your consideration. Next slide please. So we are revisiting a few slides that you have already seen. This is a graph that shows the increase in revenue needs based on both capital and O and M needs in the coming years. Next slide please. And the uh comparison of rates with neighboring utilities where City of Pasco current irrigation rates are the lowest and with the first year of proposed increases still remains the lowest. Next slide please. And again, just a refresher on what you have already seen, connection charges as calculated, the way that the model works is we look at all the needs and identify which of those needs are tied to development or growth. And therefore, a calculation is made where we can identify how much is the maximum chargeable amount for those new connections as they occur. And there are assumptions on rate of growth and number of uh equivalent residential units, you're seeing ERU right there. So that maximum calculated rate is one thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars per equivalent residential unit. That is a single residential unit connecting to our irrigation system. Again, this is maximum, right? So uh there could be an opportunity for considering whether a lower connection fee were to be instated instead of the maximum calculated. Thank you. So um in the previous presentation, uh you had seen this slide where we say, okay, there is there's a policy decision where there is a balance between rates and connection fees. Ultimately, the revenue needs are uh what they are. They're the same. But whether we cha- you choose to charge the maximum connection fee and a seventeen percent increase in the next three years, and then that increase goes back down to three percent, or there is no connection fee. And that rate increase is higher so that the delta in, in revenues is met. Next slide. After the presentation in October, uh council or during the presentation, council directed staff to uh perform outreach. So outreach was done between the months of December, January and uh the beginning of February. That outreach included a full website uh page with information on rate increase and the utility system as a, as a whole. There were also social media posts. There were uh city-generated traditional media outreach. Next slide please. Um, which all generated um engagement from the public. And most importantly, probably there were two community meetings, one that was uh focused on the development community that happened in December eleventh of twenty twenty-four. And then a community at large outreach meeting that occurred in January. That was January thirteenth. During those, we explained the rate increase, the needs of the system, how the system works, how the calculation was done for the proposed rate increases, and we seek comments from the public. Additionally, we also in our website had a forum which many uh community members participated in submitting their written forms with comments related to both connection fees and rates. Next slide please. So you're seeing some of the examples of the traditional media uh articles that were published. Next slide. And as a summary of the comments received in writing from uh the online form in the website, it, we received thirty-eight comments. Uh, two of the respondents were in agreement with the increase of both rate and connection fee. Uh, and you're seeing in the screen this, I'm, I'm just narrating it, but um, there were some agreement with monthly rate increase from eight respondents. And then uh, there was some agreement with connection fee existing. Yet, uh, the vast majority, sort of twenty-five of those comments were vastly opposed to rate increases. And this was the general public, just uh making, making a clarification. We did not exclude general public that is not served by irrigation. So it's across the board, anybody in Pasco could provide a comment. Okay, so out of the comments, both in meetings and um and in writing, there is also some themes that were collected through our communications team. And some of those included some um skepticism on the need for the improvements or the condition of the improvements as well as um requesting that there would be a sustainable alternative to the use of irrigation and uh financial equity, where we could recognize those that um have limited ability to pay the increased rate and potentially have a senior rate or other low income consideration for those rate payers. That does not exist in the irrigation utility. It does exist in water and sewer. Next slide. So once again, this is uh very similar to the prior slide. With the connection fee established at the maximum allowable amount or maximum calculated amount, the increases proposed are in rates, seventeen percent in the first three years and three percent in the next year, in the next three years. So that carries us through uh twenty thirty. And then without connection fees, so if connection fees were not to be uh instated at all. Then the rate would have to increase by nineteen and a half percent on the first three years. And then maintaining the three percent on the three la- later years, next slide please. So really, the options that are available is a range of them. The first one would be to not increase rates and not have connection fees. And that means that the capital improvement plan that was planned for this utility could not be carried forward. That the system will have lower reliability, right, we we have evaluated that there were some issues with. Pressure and the the system is becoming older and worn out and so those. Um maintenance projects would likely also not occur and then. Ultimately, this would result in an increase in portable water in the future and what we mean by that is increase in the demands to the portable system. And associated with it is increasing the cost of the portable water rates and fees. Because that system cannot serve the demands with its current infrastructure. So it cannot serve portable needs and irrigation needs with the current portable infrastructure, just making sure that was clear. And then uh the second alternative is to um adopt the rate increase. Uh and instate the maximum connection charge. And that is the the chart you saw before, and then the third option would be a moderate option where maybe uh the connection fee is. Instated but at a reduced amount, not the maximum allowable and therefore. The rates would have to increase, but maybe it would be less increased than the nineteen and a half, could be somewhere between seventeen and nineteen and a half percent. In the first three years. And with that, there was a lot of information, uh the next steps for that, um and I will let. Deputy City Manager, okay, I'll finish this, so next steps. Could be to incorporate your feedback, so this is the third portion of the presentation, seeking feedback on what is the preferred path forward. And working towards the have having um if there is a need for rate and connection fees to be. To be adopted effective date to begin with the irrigation system this year in April.
Thank you for that.
And Mayor, I just wanted to add, sometimes it's hard to think with percentages, uh but they really make a difference and people usually budget with dollars. Uh and with a rate, just pure rate increases with hundred percent of the connection fee. Uh would be around five dollars per month averaged out over the over the first three years. Uh and you're looking at about six dollars if you were to do zero connection fee, so somewhere between five. To six dollars of uh rate increase is what you're looking at, uh and then the connection fee off on the side, thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh do we have any comments, I I I'll just express, uh I certainly think there's somewhere. To be met in the middle where there's uh cost borne by all and certainly the connection fees, uh I think. We've talked about growth paying for growth, I don't like that verbiage personally, um but I do think that uh. We have folks that have been using the system for quite some time, won't need to connect and so it'd be. Tough to kind of penalize them for being an existing user, with that, I'll kick it off to Mister Grim.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, Director Sarah, appreciate the presentation and just looking through the slides here, I. Think probably, at least in my mind, one of the most important slides you shared with us is slide thirteen. That shows the existing and then even the proposed uh rates are far below our neighbors, I mean. I can't quite say th- three times, but really close to the proposed rate being three times. Um or three times less than the the most expensive, the Ki- Kennewick Irrigation District. And I know when we have to pay our bills every month, that's. We're we're writing that check, we're not necessarily thinking about our neighbors, thanks for putting that on screen, but. I think that shows really, I I guess the value that we've had here and I know many residents have chosen to live in Pasco. Because for a long time, we have had a lower cost of living than so our neighbors and some other municipalities, but at the same time. There's this expectation for the same level of services and other infrastructure and it's really hard to do and I appreciate. Staff trying to make it work for so long on such a huge disparity of rates and. And I I think all of us want to keep rates as low as possible for our constituents, but. We're just in this quandary where to provide service, whether it be water pressure, adding to the system as the state grows and. Uh you know, I've, Mister Mayor, you commented about, you know, maybe that's not worded the best, growth paying for growth, but. I think when people do wanna add to the system, some of the um existing customers of the system shouldn't necessarily. For lack of a better phrase, be on the hook to pay for that growth, I know they don't feel good about it, so. I I I'm with you, Mister Mayor, that I I think we do need to move on this at some level and I guess it's for us to. Bat this back and forth a little bit more to find that number, so um thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mister Grim, Mister Harpster.
Uh I've had two points, one being the, to Mister Grim's point, the existing rate of two twenty-one fifty-five is the lowest. But then the proposed rate is, that's only the first year and so in reality, by the time all the increases take effect, we're at three eighty-seven seventy-four. Um so I think it's important that we present the data that way, now that doesn't even put us at the top still. Number three, when by twenty thirty will be the biggest city, uh it still seems fair to me, especially when we've been considerably low for so long. Um and then um. Uh just express agreement with Mayor Serrano's uh recommendation or position that there's a mix of. Connection fee and uh monthly rate increase, especially when, as you said, uh Mr. Del, the the rate increases, you know, four to six dollars. Um which uh. I don't think anybody's a fan of tax increases or fee increases, but it it's a necessity in this situation and we'd only get to a point where. Because we, you know, we had twenty-five Facebook comments that said they didn't want an increase, we didn't do it. And find ourselves with bigger problems down the road that are going to cost more, um so those are my thoughts for now, thanks.
Thank you, Mister Harpster, Mister Peralos.
Thank you, Mayor, um cause my my first constructive criticism would be, I didn't really see any Hispanic media. In the community um engagement piece, um unless we just added in there, I don't see anything. That was kind of put out there that was in Spanish. Um so that, that would be my uh one constructive criticism, so I I but I I hope that the. You know, Telemundo and them have carried this um proposed irrigation increase, cause. Uh I but again, I I I don't like judging people because people assume that I can speak Spanish and I can't speak Spanish that well. So I'm sure a lot of those households can also speak English, so I just wanted to make a note of that and I'm I'm really torn on this and I. I would really like to see kind of some percentages and stuff like that, cause the the individuals I think about are a lot of my neighbors who are on fixed incomes and. I know some people, four dollars, that's not a whole lot or even towards the aggregate, but I mean. We are gonna be somewhere in the middle, um and we just still need to pay for a lot of our growth and. And and I don't like putting this on the backs of all the residents and so if we can find some happy medium where we can get the revenue. Um so we can expand um our irrigation system and 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 all that, then I think I think that that's a win-win for everyone, but. Is there, is there waivers for this, like a percentage of irrigation costs at all for individuals who are on fixed incomes?
We do have, that that was a question that came up during our um outreach sessions and. We do have a senior reduced uh rate for our water and sewer. Uh but we do not have that for irrigation and depending on how council wants to move forward and if that's a direction from you all. Uh would be more than happy to come up with that program.
Yeah, I I would be in favor of that and maybe when we start getting some uh percentage of stuff, you can maybe put some. Um just give us some information about that, maybe we can combine the two unless you feel like they need to be done separately. I don't know if we can do it all together at the same time um with what you're uh proposing, perhaps adding irrigation to a reduced amount. Like we do.
Uh if that if that is a direction from council, uh we can we can bring that to you as a package.
Okay, um that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Thank you, I see Mister Zabel, you're late.
Uh yeah, the the reduced rate is something we can evaluate, I I'm pretty familiar with uh the reduced rate on water and sewer in the statutory. Authorization for cities to do that, I don't know that that applies to water uh irrigation utilities. So that's something we'd have to explore before we can make a recommendation on it.
Thank you, Mister Zabel, um uh just kind of one parting comment for me, um. One of my main struggles with this and I understand the need for the twenty twenty-six four point seven million in new debt. Is we're talking about over at a minimum of fifty-one percent increase over three years. If there's any way that we can capture that and soften it, I mean, if we're doing a five-year projection, maybe it's seventeen, thirteen, ten and then. Nine-nine or like, I don't know, I didn't do the numbers in my head, but i- if rather than a mass spike. And then a drop off to kind of flatten out over the back end two years, unless that revenue is absolutely needed immediately. Maybe we could again spike it year one, um spike it a little less year two, spike it a little later yes. And again, it'll flatten out, it might be ten percent for the last four years, but at least it fills um. It's not as hard of a blow, I think, in the immediate future and again, I'll just uh uh reiterate what I said, I I do think that uh. We're, we absolutely need connection fees, I don't know how high of that level. But I think as we see maybe some alternatives, again, if there is a possibility to flatten the curve on the back end, um. Maybe there's a way that we can do it both equitably for new folks as well as folks who have lived here for anywhere from one year to ninety years. So like trust that you'll come back and pencil sharpen, but I I think generally it sounds like you have support for the program or or, you know, the. The the opportunity to recover these revenues um and look forward to seeing what you bring forward. Uh do we have any public comments on this issue, I uh looks like we got one. And if you don't mind uh uh saying your name and your city of residence or county, do you, yeah, there you go, you're on, you got two minutes.
Okay, Katie Copeland, Realtor, Pasco, um. I find it really hard to believe that affordable housing wasn't mentioned at all in this study. We know that it's a crisis and a fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollar addition for people buying a home. Just can't happen right now, so what Mayor said, like maybe soften it a little at the front um or. Do the increase versus the connection fee, so thank you.
Thank you, Miss Copeland, I believe you said. Thank you, Mister Cortinas. Uh if you can turn it on, face the mic. Uh yeah, she did. There you go, you're on.
Uh Dick Cortinas, Pasco, I'd be behooded if I didn't stick up for our small business owners, uh. Uh our small business owners, last night's meeting, we we talked about this, we saw it on the agenda. And uh I'd have to come out and and speak out for our small business owners, uh if we have to pay more money and for more for using water in the City of Pasco. Uh it we're already being hit with higher wages this month, this year, we're already being hit with all kinds of other increases, so. I'm here to speak on behalf of of the small Hispanic business owners. As to the Mister Grim, as to the uh three times less reven- uh cost for us here in the community. You gotta look at the uh income uh that is coming into these homes. In Pasco, we're three times less of of in- income, household income. As compared to Benton County, Richland and Kennewick, they can afford what they're paying. Because they are getting those uh increase, uh their 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 wages are much higher than they are here and and so I agree with Mister Peralos. That he's sticking up for the for the those low income families, uh fifty-nine percent Hispanic. I think Maria's department didn't do their homework and reaching out and getting the the Hispanic community to come out to speak. And 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 or the Hispanic business owners, uh I think that uh I I we would, it would be a huge mistake. That we'd be putting uh the charges on a whole lot of these residents that cannot afford even five or six dollars more a month. Uh that I think this needs to be looked at again and 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 don't support uh this type of 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 uh. Uh uh suggestion to increase and then also get rid of the uh the charges of uh. Uh 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 connecting or reconnecting, thank you.
Thank you, and and I do suspect there is some outreach, but we'll find out once uh Miss Sarah will get back to us and. I assure you that we'll make sure that if there wasn't that it'll happen as we continue to have this conversation, Miss Pichon.
Um yes, um I will speak for communications, so we did send out a press release, um and we've had. Um good success doing that where the media, Spanish media channels do reach out for interviews, we did not receive any. Uh for this topic, but I will follow back up with communications on it.
Thank you, just make sure we've got everyone, thank you, uh do we have any additional public comment on this issue, looks like we got one more, at least. Light's still on, so we're good to roll, thank you, Mister Cortinas for leaving there.
I'm Celeste Carlson Stanley and I live in Pasco, I um also believe the Hispanic people do not get enough. Um social media and Russian and Ukrainian uh members of our community did not get enough. Um social media notice to be able to um send in their um opinions about the rates, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comments? Going twice, going third time, uh public comment on this issue is closed, thank you. Um for the insights on the various languages that we may need to make sure we're serving with our population. With that, it moves on to item number six, which is miscellaneous council discussion. Um I I do have one thing, uh that I talked to you interim city manager Zabel, so I don't wanna. I'll I'll preface it with that so that you're not caught off the fly, uh one of the things that I've been advocating for for quite some time is having some office space. Whether it's shared or rotating for council members down here, um obviously, we'd have to do everything we could to avoid a quorum space. Um you, I understand that, um whether it's again, one, one that just something that we could check out, if you will. In the event that, for example, uh constituent wants to meet or um if, you know, again, if a couple of us were. Uh meeting with the city manager, obviously, we could use your office, but you know, there may be an opportunity to have non-quorum conversations. Um I think there's an opportunity and quite frankly, some of us have young children. And uh preparing for city council sometimes, uh either we have to disappear into our offices and we get bothered by clients. Um or, you know, or it's uh beneficial just to have that extra space, so. Uh if you could look into that, I don't know that there is physically an asset for us or that could be dedicated, but um. And certainly if no one else on council would be interested in using that, then I guess it's a dead conversation, so I guess let's pulse that real quick. This, that's anyone even desire to have that space. Well, you got uh two, a head nod and a yeah, okay, so generally, I think we're amenable to it and so i- if there is a space. That doesn't have to be created or take some seriously critical real estate, um think whether it's a small conference room or whatever, might be helpful.
We, yes, uh Mayor, we can look around, see what options might be available.
Perfect. Um any other miscellaneous comment, uh Mister Harpster?
Yeah, uh for Mister Zabel, I just wanna touch based on the city manager's search and see if you have any kind of an update for us or. If you need direction from us, um what I'd like to see is council give direction to go to get proposals from. At least a couple of different firms for comparison, so that we can start making some decisions and uh making some progress on on the search.
So I didn't have an update, but uh yes, I've been spending most of my time getting up to speed, but I I uh would would share that I. In my mind frame, my mind's eye, my timeframe was probably about a week or two out to be able to get you. Uh a bit of a plan, so if that works, we can maybe discuss it next week. And uh get some direct with some options and get some direction from council.
Thank you. Any additional, Mister Zabel, your lights on and off, uh you have, okay, uh looks like we've got no further lights, anything else from staff? Seeing none, that's gonna roll us into item number seven, which is executive session, we do have need for an executive session of fifteen minutes. Uh that is to consider site selection or acquisition of real estate purchase or lease if likelihood disclosure would increase price. Under revised Code of Washington, section forty-two point three zero point one one zero subsection one, subsection B again. That is for fifteen minutes, that'll be uh the interim city manager, uh presumably the city attorney and the deputy city manager. Um if we can get, uh I I need a break, a real quick break to run to the restroom. Do we wanna call it six minutes, start it at nine fifteen and then go from nine fifteen to thirty? Um yeah, so we'll meet an execu- executive session commencing at nine fifteen and again for fifteen minutes, thank you. Um, yeah, so we'll meet an execu- executive session commencing at nine fifteen and again for fifteen minutes, thank you. Um, yeah, so we'll meet an execu- executive session commencing at nine fifteen and again for fifteen minutes. Thank you. Um, yeah, so we'll meet an execu- executive session commencing at nine fifteen and again for fifteen minutes. Thank you. It is nine thirty, we have re- uh, returned from an executive session, ex- executive session, it is now over, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for joining us.